Today's COVID update is brought to you by Full Tech Systems, your technology center, where you'll come for the price, but stay for the service.
And we're back. And if you're joining us now, we're just getting our second conversation for this morning started. And as we said earlier, we are speaking about cannabis. And joining us this morning is our cannabis consultant to the Ministry of New Growth Industries. We have joining us Alex Levine, who is the cannabis consultant and CEO of Growth Industries. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me.
Well, thank you for joining us this morning. Now, this is a very interesting topic, and it's been one that's been generating a lot of buzz locally, given the plans that the government has been announcing. So let's first start off with a little bit about you and sort of the work that you do, so both as a consultant and as CEO.
Well, I've been in this industry since I was about 18 years old. We have close to about 150 acres in California, 80 acres in Bend, Oregon. We have a 600,000 square foot facility in Rhode Island that we have finished the first phase of it, which is about 10,000 square feet of standardized medicine. You know, the focus, the reason I even got involved into the industry to begin with was on the medicinal side of it. Unfortunately, growing up, I had a very tragic accident that happened to a very close family member of mine that took his own life. I happened to be in the room right next to him. And afterwards, you know, from a pharmaceutical standpoint, they tried giving a lot of sleeping medicines and things of that nature when I was young. And the reality was that, you know, it was not helping me to the extent of where the doctors felt that it was helping me. I was kind of in my own kind of little world, and I was able to alleviate myself from that. And at the age of 18, I was introduced to cannabis, and the nightmare stopped. I've watched this medicine do miraculous things on the medical side, and I believe 100% into it. But the one thing that I was really focused on as I watched this industry evolve was it kind of evolved from the street side to now having standards, right? Because it's all about consumable goods, you know? Anything that you take right now, there's standards before it hits the shelves. And that's really what my focus was on all of this, you know, is making sure that there's accessible, there's access to this medicine because it does a lot of good, but that there's standards to it. And that's really, you know, the focal point behind it. You know, the main initiative of what we have done with, in Growth Industries, is to create standardization, meaning if you pick up a product in Belize, or if you pick up a product in Miami or New York, you're getting the same exact product, similar to Tylenol, similar to Advil. But with that, you need the standards, right? You don't want to mess like what happened in the Dominican Republic with alcohol, where they're making their own alcohol, people got sick and people died. You know, there is a large concern in countries such as the Caribbean nations because of the high humidity that it creates mold. People that need this for medicine, or if they're going to use it recreationally, mold is a precursor to be able to get cancer. So, you know, really to be able to drive home the fact that Belize or different nations are going to be able to have those types of standards would allow this product to evolve. And that's really, you know, my main initiative in all of, in all the projects I get involved in. I currently sit on the board on the EU Council, which is called SAICA, for the Cannabis Commission Control. I also am part of RIMO, which is the Rhode Island Manufacturing Association, which involves also on the cannabis sector. And really, we just want to be able to bring standards, you know, across the globe and see this product develop the way that it deserves.
Now, before we move into kind of the pros and cons of the industry, let's just find out a bit about how you got involved with the Belize conversation.
Yeah, I've been coming to Belize for quite some time, even from the previous government that was here. I've always found it completely fascinating. I love the people here. I love the culture here. I love the, you know, the climate. I mean, you can't, you can't go wrong with, you know, beautiful Belize. So I've been coming here for quite a bit, and I did try, I did meet with previous government as well to tell them that this is an opportunity for a new growth industries for Belize that can change the dynamic of, you know, taxable revenue and bring in large amounts of revenue for the country. That being said, you know, the previous government did roll out a hemp program that allowed 42 licenses that were kind of just kind of blind. And that being said, recreational has already existed before we even came here. So the foresight of all of this is to bring standards and controlled chaos to what's already been kind of released. It's not something that now we're creating out of thin air. It's already here. So really, it was just to give the insight, and my main focus was to give it all for free. I really want, you know, this product deserves access, right? People deserve access to this product, and that's really my initiative. And the more nations that follow suit, the more accessible that it'll be for everybody's product. So if they say, okay, what's in it for me as a company? You know, if this eventually evolves in Belize where resorts and things of that nature will be able to do, there'll be numerous amounts of companies that are going to want to get into the market here, and then there'll be taxable revenue when, as it comes in. So really, my foresight was just to give the knowledge to bring standards to the industry that right now the previous government did not add to it. It just seemed to give out licenses and not really put a standard protocol on it.
So the major difference that I'm hearing from what you've noted so far, one, it's a conversation that's going beyond just building a hemp industry. It's also looking at what you call standardization, which is looking at the final product, but it's also, I'd imagine, looking at who gets involved. Let's start there, because we know that this is a very lucrative industry. And for the states in the United States and the countries that have gone ahead to make this decision, it is making them a lot of money. But one of the clearly defined drawbacks is who can get involved. Typically, your licensing fees are exorbitantly high, which means that those who can get involved in the industry would already have to have been well-heeled, to say it best. So how do you level the playing field and understanding that the standards is an important part of the conversation?
That's a very good question, and myself, I don't come from money whatsoever, so I know exactly what that is. When I tell you I lived in my car for five weeks, I didn't have, you know, anything to potipis in, as they would say. And I can tell you, I understand the sentiment of, you know, the small farmer that says, hey, I want to get involved into it. And I always say the same thing. Everyone should be able to get involved into it as long as the standards are put in place, okay? The last thing that I would want, because we're involved in certain states where we're licensed in, that the state would say, yeah, everybody get involved, but here are the standards. You let everybody go and put all this money into the project only to realize that you can't meet the standards because you don't have enough money, right? But the reality is, is that if you buy a bag of Dorito chips, right? Those same standards exist for Dorito chips. Does that mean all the small-time individuals here that want to get involved are going to start making Dorito chips knowing all the things that you need to do to put it on a shelf? And that's really the, my driving force is if they want to get involved, take an example of something that I had originally done. I went and raised capital. If you are really passionate about doing it, capital is always available. If you do the right business plan and you put the right merit in front of you to go and demonstrate that you can do it, people will invest into it. So it's not cutting out anyone. Is, do the individuals have the foresight to understand where the industry is already at? This is not feelings. This is the industry is already here. Like if you're in the EU, you cannot ship product if you're not what's considered EU MP, okay? In the United States, it's called CGMP, Certified Good Manufacturing Practices. No one will take it. You take Marriott, Hilton, whoever is going to be coming over here that eventually will say, let's bring it in just like alcohol. They will not take a chance on someone who's banging it by hand. They will not. Because if they get sick, then what?
So when you talk about the implementation of standards, what are you talking about? Or is it a lab that's equipped to test a level of THC? How detailed are we talking about?
Good question. A lot of it is full panel testing, not just THC, okay? There are certain states that when they know that their merit-driven licenses don't show enough merit, then they'll just test for THC. But the reality is you need a full panel testing. Meaning if someone picked their nose and then grabbed the bud, it's going to show up that you have some type of, you know, bacteria on it. You know, if you use pesticides, which that's a precursor of having, you know, you can have a stroke from smoking pesticides. And it is very, very much practiced, practiced on the illegal market of what's here or in Mexico. It is very, very used to use pesticides to draw down pests and then also riddle mold issues. You know, all of these things is what needs to be tested as far as standards. Then as far as the building handling policies, it's important to say, again, like what I had mentioned, are you wearing gloves? Are you, do you have drains underneath so that you don't have flies and fruit flies that start being able to go and, and build themselves and start flying around all over the product and laying larvae onto the actual product? It's a lot of things that unless you're in the industry and understand how the industry is riddled with deficiencies, you learn from those deficiencies and you implement it in places that are starting off so that you measure twice and you cut once, and you're not running with a program with his head cut off like it currently is right now.
And it's interesting that you say that, because I was going to ask about Belize in particular. Talking about standards, of course, I think, you know, what you're suggesting or suggest that we have to really start from the cultivation stage. And I'm wondering, based on your experience, what you think or why you think Belize is a good country to invest in this industry? And from the cultivation to the end stage where we see, you know, products like those in front of us right now?
Yeah, first and foremost, the climate, okay? In a lot of it, like, take a state that I'm in, like Rhode Island. It's cold. It's 19 degrees right there, so you can imagine how happy I am to be here right now. But you take a climate like that, you can't grow outdoors, right? So when you grow outdoors, you have a lower cost of production, a very organic style of production. You will need greenhouses and, and things of that nature to achieve success in the cannabis industry here. You can't just put it on fields and, and let it grow. From a cultivation standpoint, you're going to want the experience from a genetic standpoint. And all of these things that you're going to be putting in place is going to attract the investors to say, if you put the standards in there, you're going to attract, you know, the Fortune 500 companies of the world to look and say, okay, they're worried about standards like we are to consume products. Let's take a chance and go into Belize. That's normally how it goes. There's a reason that you did not see large investors going into Jamaica. It was Wild, Wild West. I went there. I went to Jamrock. I've seen the product. You couldn't pay me to smoke the product there, and I love Jamaica, okay? It's got a culture of cannabis. I get it, but the quality's not there. The same thing goes for the product that I've seen with my own hands here. And channel, you know, all the TV segments that I've seen when they, when, when you all show cannabis, I'm looking at powdery mildew and I'm looking at mold as you open it, right? That is not what you want the message for people that are traveling here from the United States or in Europe that already have these standards that are accustomed to these products. So from an investment standpoint, I think putting these standards in place is going to open the horizons for new investors to come in. But it all starts, like you said, on the cultivation side. From there, ancillary businesses can develop when you're talking about dispensaries, distributors, people that need to bring in carts, packaging, the list goes on and on and on. So.
Now, how about overcoming what is the biggest challenge in the cannabis industry? And that looking at the banking and the laws and regulations that exist globally. While countries and individual states are making their own progress, it is still not considered easy to move the money. Where are we with that?
Good question. I would tell you that all these countries that you are referencing to have a cannabis program, okay? And nothing's been shut down. In the United States, you use credit unions, and they are available. There's a lot of banking bills that have already been put in place to hopefully, you know, you know, become a reality. But I will tell you that I don't think the banking sector is something that you should be, that you will be blacklisted for per se, due to the fact that it would be ignorant on anyone's behalf if that same country that would want to blacklist you is moving towards recreational. Even the new president in the United States is backing up cannabis. So I would tell you that it is a fear factor, but I should not be a deterrent by any stretch of the imagination because cannabis is a global business. It's not just a Belizean business. So I would tell you that this is just a matter of if, not when. Not a matter of if, but when. Sorry.
Now, and that's, that's kind of where I wanted to start locally as well. So the laws need to be changed and adjusted. One of the things we've always mused about locally is that you can't have your 10 grams, but you can't sell it, you can't grow it. So it's legal for an illegal business. Now, how important is it that internally, our structure, that we're able to establish proper regulations for even recreational use here and sale and exportation?
Well, exportation, I think, should be a big sector of for Belize in the future, especially even with hemp. There's a couple of things that, you know, I'd like to dive into on the difference between hemp and cannabis and how you really can't have both of these projects near each other because it'll ruin one and the other. But I will tell you from a banking standpoint, when you're looking at a country that's putting the standards in place, they're, they tend to be a little bit more lax or look at you the wrong way if you're putting these standards in place, because consumable goods standards is important in every country. It doesn't matter where you're, where you're going. When it comes down to exportation, there are numerous countries that do not have the climate and the wages that Belize has that essentially will be a potential client to be able to purchase product. It's already happening. You look at Canada and Australia, you look at all these different countries that are shipping it. But guess what? If the standards are not there, they will not allow you to ship it. Perfect example is hemp. I'm willing to bet, a gentleman's wager, that if you go to any of these so-called hemp licenses and you were to test that product, okay? I guarantee you it's going to test cannabis. It won't test hemp. And the reality is, is you will not be able to ship unless you have a bill of laden, a bonded carrier, and a contract with another country that has a program that essentially will take the exportation. But with all of that comes standards, all of it. It needs standards. Because they're not going to give their residents any product that doesn't hit those types of standards. So I think, again, driving home, I'll give you an example. One of these products right here, this is made from hemp. But you have your certificate of analysis that zooms in right here. With your phone, you scan it, and it takes you right to the certificate of analysis of who handled it, who packaged it, the works. You have your batch numbers, okay? For, this is a Buddha hemp product, that essentially you have your batch numbers, you have your seals inside of it so that you know no one's contaminated with it whatsoever. You have your batch numbers, which are here, and your expiration dates that are here, okay? So that you know, like, I'll give you an example, the E. coli outbreak, okay? Do you remember that, when the romaine lettuce went away? It took them four weeks to find that it came from a farm in Oklahoma and what farm it came from. That's the importance of doing all of this stuff, because you need to be able to limit, you have to be able to limit all these types of nuances.
And what you have in front of you are CBD and hemp products.
Yeah.
So we have some moisturizer. I see some CBD gummies.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, like, for instance, in cannabis, when you're talking about the evolution of cannabis, right? This is a pre-roll box. Now, there's no cannabis inside of it whatsoever, but I wanted to show you the importance of standards. You would think this is a box that would open up, right? But it's child-resistant. It has this box. I can tell you there's adults that have issues opening this box. I've become a pro at it, so it's kind of, but you hold this side down, and then it slides down, and then you have your joints, okay? Now, the importance of doing all of this stuff is so that, for instance, you don't, and then again, warning, safety seals, the works, to make sure that everybody understands exactly what it is they're taking. But as you can see here, all of the same things that you see here is the same thing that can happen in cannabis or in hemp. But I have not seen any of that evolve in Belize, not even with the licenses that were issued out before. So.
Where do you think the biggest market is? Is it moving into hemp? Is it moving into CBD products, or is it moving into cannabis?
Hemp, in my opinion, there's an oversaturation of hemp already as it is, okay? I think there'll be sectors that will develop in the hemp industry, such as textiles and things of that nature. The issue is that there's really big players that can, that cost pennies to produce what they've already been producing, such as cotton, things of that nature. So there'll be a learning curve and an investment curve to get those materials to the cost of what's already accessible right now. In the cannabis space, I will tell you, you have the medicinal route, you have the recreational route. And really, that is, in my opinion, the sector where you will get the most amount of churn. But on the hemp side, that's where it can go absolutely everywhere. So we're, our one products, we're in Australia, we're in Europe, we're all over the United States. We're all, you know, so that is accessible for distribution everywhere. So I think Belize should have a program to incorporate both, but with clear definitions on how you're going to get there to the exportations with standards.
And the difference between moving into medicinal versus recreational?
It's already recreational here, so you can't really go backwards. What you have to do is control the, you have to create standards and give it a, give it a legal framework that people can go and follow. I think it's going to, you know, if you look at statistics in different states, crime has gone down because of it. If you look at the youth in states like recreational, like California or in Colorado, teen use has gone way down. Why? Because teens and younger generations want what's illegal, unfortunately, you know, they want what's.
They want what they shouldn't have.
Yeah.
Bingo. I have two children myself, so I can tell you as a father, you know, the educational of this plant. You know, I think if you go back to the beginning of when this became even illegal, that's a great topic to even talk about. This all came down to DuPont and certain people that held strong positions in pharmaceutical companies that said, I don't want this competition.
Well, I'm glad you went there. We ensured that we got some of the business side of, out of it because we have to get to what is the main issue in the public discourse. Medicinal marijuana has been around for a long time, you know, cocaine management and for many different things. CBD has really been coming into the market. I think people know that now. But when we talk locally about the potential of legalizing or creating a market for cannabis, people are scared. We have been taught one thing and one thing only. It's that it's a drug, and drugs are bad. In your experience, what, how do you respond to someone who says you're just going to get, or children more addicted to drugs, they're going to have easier access to it, and will have more problems in the end?
I would say that's a little bit of an ignorant statement that are, that are saying that out of respect. First and foremost, I mean it out of respect, but it's an ignorant statement. First and foremost, it's a plant, okay? When you talk about, you know, even take a topic like cocaine. Cocaine is the coca plant. There's nothing wrong with the actual plant. It's the individuals that turn it into a processed substance that made it bad. When you look at the benefits that come from the plant of cannabis, there's numerous cannabinoids inside of that plant that work a plethora of different ailments, okay? No matter if you're using it recreationally or if you're using it medicinally, okay? Alcohol. Alcohol has already been proven that it gives an insane amount of ailments, okay? With all the research that's been done currently right now, there hasn't been a single medical ailment that's come from cannabis. If anything, they give that as a medical ailment, as a prescription for that medical ailment.
And while, while I hear what you're saying, where there's research and there's science to kind of guide what you are talking about, it's a very simple thing. It's stigma and discrimination, the hardest thing to fight in any, I mean, when you talk about diseases, it's almost impossible. And that's what you have to overcome when you're coming into a new market where they're exploring the possibilities of it. So I think coming back with the same question, that while yes, there's research, how do you educate people?
I think educational seminars are ideal, like the virtual, what Kareem Moussa was able to set up. I think that is necessary on a, on a monthly basis, on a continual basis. You know, I think as the, as the industry develops and you see businesses start popping up and things of that nature, making sure that those businesses are also creating education, because this is a unified objective. This is not just, you know, one individual or one minister that is on an objective. This is for the country. So I think more important than anything else, it all comes down to education. Looking at what, you know, the old school reefer madness idea, that if you watch that, you'll laugh right now, right? I mean, have you ever had the second, if you have a chance and watch it for 30 seconds, I don't think you could keep up, you couldn't help but laugh.
Is that the, your, your brains on drugs video?
Yeah, I mean, I gotta be honest with you. You want to change anyone's opinion on it right now, let them watch that. They themselves are going to laugh, you know? And the reality is, is it was very easy to warp the minds of the individuals due to the TV segments that they were pushing out there. It was very easy. And there wasn't Google or things of that nature, so that it was very easy to say, hey, this is bad. But then as things continued to evolve, they started realizing, like, for instance, children that take the product that have seizures, all of a sudden it's gone. How do you fight, how do you fight that? You know, take an example like me, right? I have no problem saying I smoke cannabis every day, okay? I do it right before I go to sleep. I don't have nightmares. I sleep like a baby, wake up. I'm functional. I do everything, you know, love my kids. I'm a, I'm a working father, right? But I sleep like a baby every single night. Do I think I need a medical prescription to go and do that? No. Do I also enjoy it when I smoke it? Yeah, but then I go to sleep, right? That, in my opinion, is a version of recreational. Who is someone to say that that is not a recreational version? Same way like when you smoke a cigar or you have a drink. It's the same exact thing. So I think the abuse angle, and again, when you're talking about abuse and substance, it all comes down to standards. It goes right back to standards, right? If you give someone one beer, they got a nice little, you know, cheers. Then you drink six beers, that individual chose to drink six beers, and then now they're tipsy, right? Same thing goes for cannabis. You set single dose amounts that are in there. You make sure that it's not accessible to children, and you put the standards in place to make sure that it goes away from them, and.
But beyond, beyond saying and sharing anecdotes, what's the research thing? There's enough experience now for us to know whether or not there's an increase in the use, whether there are crimes that are tied to the business. Tell us.
You know, as I was going to say, whether, you know, they have this thing about it being a gateway drug, which I think has been preempting.
I think alcohol is the gateway.
Yeah, I know. I was going to preempt you by saying, I think that's been disproved, but you can go on and answer, you know, the substance of Marlene's question.
So the question again is.
What does the research say?
The research pretty much states that, like, for instance, you take Colorado, okay? Colorado crime has gone down drastically. First and foremost, again, I can say that I smoke cannabis. I have no problem saying I smoke cannabis. I don't know many cannabis users that are angry. I don't, okay? When you look at the country of Belize and you say, look at the, the, the turf wars, and, and I sympathize with that, but I'm going to tell you this right now because I had the pleasure of meeting several Belizean citizens that disagreed with some of the articles that are out there of how violence has occurred. The violence has occurred on the transaction. When someone buys something, doesn't pay them back, or this or that, or what have you, and then the street mentality takes over, okay? But when it comes, if you regulate all of these things, there's no room for interpretation. If you can't buy the product, well, then don't come into the store, right? So it's going to bring that order to that side of it. And in my opinion, you know, if you look at Colorado, if you look at California, teen use has gone down in every single state that medical marijuana has gone through, and crime has gone down in every single state that medical marijuana or recreational marijuana has gone to. It has not gone up. And statistics have shown that in all the states that have gone medical or recreational. So it's not, in my opinion, a, you know, throwing gas to the fire. It's if anything, you're throwing water to the fire.
And where's, where's the, the market for Belize?
I think it's amazing. You know, when you talk about the tourism side of it, when you go on, when you're, when you're a tourist, what's the first thing that you want to do? You want to relax? You want to engage in whatever Belize is doing? And I think the importance of having Belizean-made products for this tourist is something that it could also be rebranded as a new tourist attraction, as a new exportation when it becomes legal to export cannabis. On the hemp side, I think there's a huge market for it. But I really see this generating millions and millions and millions of dollars for Belize without putting an exact number on it. You know, I would say if you have, I'm just going to use whole numbers. If you have a million tourists that come here, I'm willing to, you know, put the house on it that 38 to 40% of the people will embark onto the program, which is substantial amount of revenue for the country.
And how do we keep our locals involved in the business?
Absolutely. I'm a big fan of grassroots movement. That's where I came from. So I think, again, giving them the opportunity, if they are really serious about wanting to get a license and they have the funding and they do all the due diligence that's needed to get a license like anywhere else in the world, they should be involved. If not, then what they should also be doing is being, getting involved in the ones that do, are able to acquire the license and the ancillary businesses that, that stem from it. I think there's going to be a plethora of ancillary businesses that Belize has not even thought of from even marketing. You're going to see your marketing departments get bigger because all these companies are going to want to market the products in resorts. You're going to see packaging companies that might do something here that are going to be able to take off. You know, you can have a delivery company that, that delivers product direct to the consumer. I think there's, there's a huge market for it. I can't, I can't stress it enough. I mean, I put it upwards. You know, I see the country being able to make, you know, four or 500 million dollars from it eventually as this thing evolves.
And with that said, I was going to ask, you know, about your sort of role here in advising the government and sort of what are the recommendations that you're making and how, and what really is your, or how do you see your role, you know, in contributing to perhaps the future of this industry? to perhaps the future of this industry?
Just industry insight and standards. That's really all that, you know, that I want to kind of push forward on of it. I know the ministry has a really good understanding on what's going on. But again, if you, if the only thing that I have driven is if you're going to want to see this evolve and you're going to want to see Belize truly benefit from it, it has to be standard driven, whether the small farmer wants to accept it or not. You know, I've made myself available to every single person on Facebook, answer every single email because I understand their concern. They want to know this is happening in our backyard. Why is someone from outside, you know, the US or why is this white man coming over here and doing it, right? First, I'm Cuban, but I understand exactly where they're coming from. From an expertise standpoint, you know, I feel confident in saying that I have every bit of expertise that's needed to lead this country and give the insight when it comes down just to the cannabis side, you know, and give the insight to get this thing to the next level because we do it on a daily basis. And really it's to allow other Belizean groups to get to that same level. It's not me. So, you know, I really just want to be able to say, hey, if this group is doing it and is doing it correctly, you will be able to go and ship to Cyprus or you'll be able to go and ship the product to other countries that have already rolled out programs that need product. Okay, there's certain products, certain countries that don't have the climate that has it here and their cost of production is 10 times as high, that Belize will be able to fill some of those orders. You have the local market here that in my opinion should be very much involved in its own sector, but with standards that every single product that you pick up, you know, will have everything that's tagged and traced so that you know there's 1,000 of something, 10,000 of something, 100 of something, but you know that it's been taxed revenue and who it went to. That's the, that's, that's the only two cents really that I'm pushing forward on the guidance aspect.
So let me be very clear. So in addition to helping the ministry develop standards, do you have investment interests?
No, no investment interest in it because I think it would be a conflict of interest and then things would kind of unravel. I sit on board on the EU right now. I have no interest whatsoever on, in the project of, you know, on the board that I sit on. Again, it's access because eventually there will be exportation, there will be importation. And at that point, yes, you know, hopefully I will benefit later on down the road with the crusade of what I'm doing of not just in Belize, but in various countries.
What's, when you, when you see what happens in the initial phase of making moves towards legalization from medicinal or recreational use, some countries in some places go to a vote. Do you think that's the best way to make the decision?
As far as a vote, how?
Voting on whether or not the country should move towards legalization.
I think voting, the thing is, is that the industry is already there, right? So it's kind of hard to go and vote something that's already recreational. What you need to do is add standards. Every country is different, every state is different. But in my opinion, it's already here. You got, you have, you have unorganized chaos. You need to bring organization to it.
And with that said, you know, what do you think is, well, what's the roadmap then? How do we get it from where we are now to actually implementing, regulating the already existing industry? How do we get to the standards that you talk about?
I think what Minister Moussa is doing on the educational side is very positive. And then putting together the regulatory framework that everyone can understand and comprehend and move forward with it. Again, every day that the country does not move forward in this direction is every day that you're losing revenue, they're bringing in product from Mexico, you're selling it, you know, there's violence, this, that, or what have you. In my opinion, the longer that the country waits, first and foremost, I'm going to tell you Belize is super late to the show. Mexico just went full recreational for medical. They have every intention of going recreational. You know, you look at all the neighboring countries that are doing the absolute, the same. And in my opinion, if Belize waits any longer, there's no reason to set up because Mexico would just import everything to the hotels and tourism and pharmacies and things of that nature.
And have you tested our products?
You don't want to know what I found. Yeah.
No, I mean, is there potential for good quality?
There could be the potential with the right guidance, but I have tested, I spent close to about $1,500 so far in tests and not one passed.
Based on standards?
Based on what is being smoked here right now.
What is it? The THC level too high? You talked about mold.
Oh, the opposite. No, it's mold. So it's got mold, it's got powdery mildew, it had pesticides in it, every single one. And your THC count inside of it is so low because the standards of where they're growing it is, so your cannabinoid levels don't even develop. You know, when you're talking about CBG and CBN, these are not things that get you high. These are things that will reduce inflammation and things that it's non-existent because the quality standards that you're putting and growing this plant doesn't allow it to develop.
Okay. All right. Well, we covered quite a bit, but I know people have a lot more questions. The virtual town hall, what's the format for that?
As far as I know, I know that it's going to be a lot of questions submitted online. Then we'll be answering one by one those questions. And I really look forward to being able to answer all of them. This is such, it's a breath of fresh air. This is a very transparent process. I can't, you know, tell you how many other states kind of keep all of this tight to the vest. You look at corruption, you look at all the things that are going on. This is the opposite. This is very transparent process. We want everybody to know exactly what's going on, but need to understand that this is a standard driven industry, whether the Belizean people want to accept it or not. The days of getting a Ziploc bag and writing something on it and here's $100, that just doesn't exist anymore. Okay, it's going away everywhere, including the United States. You know, the illegal market in the United States is dwindling as we speak, the more accessible it becomes for, you know, the mom of three children that has a headache that goes into the store real quick to pick up, you know, their product or their CBD products or what have you. It's there, the industry is already there. So it's only a matter of time. And what I tell anybody that's from Belize that's still in that side of the industry